Twenty seven years.
Recording in progress.
All right. All the order July second, twenty twenty five, full meeting for the city of Gerhardt. All right. We're going to open with the public hearing. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the application must provide their name and full mailing address if they wish to be notified of the decision continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code. The city zoning code specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the city council or the land use board of appeals or to seek damages in circuit court due to a condition of approval. Before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may ask the planning commission or city council for an opportunity to present additional relevant evidence or testimony that is within the scope of the hearing. The hearing's body shall grant the request by scheduling a date to finish the hearing, a continuance to a time and date certain or by leaving the record open for additional evidence or testimony. I hereby open the hearing. Does any counselor need to declare a conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or personal bias?
No.
No? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to challenge the council's ability or someone on the council to make an impartial decision? Saying no hands raised? We'll move on. Can we have the staff report, please? Is that Garrett?
I'm going to defer that to Mr. Garrett Phillips, our. Garrett, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, crystal clear. Good.
All right. Thank you. So I'll give you a brief overview of the flood hazard overlay zone text amendments that are before you. Before I do that, just to get it in the record. This was a, this hearing began in the June city council meeting and was continued to today. And I don't think that it was specified that like certain issues were closed to discussion. So the hearing continues to be open from June is my understanding. In any case, the same two options that we presented you in in June are are presented again today. Option A is to amend the flood hazard overlay zone text to make it consistent with basic FEMA requirements for flood risk reduction. Option A is closely modeled on the Oregon model floodplain management ordinance that was last updated in around twenty twenty. Where we've just updated some of the particulars for Gerhardt. Like referencing our city name and referencing our local flood risk maps. Option B is inclusive of option A. It addresses some flood risk reduction issues that we need to catch up on in our zoning ordinance. But it also adds additional regulations that are intended to protect endangered species. They're particularly geared towards towards salmon. And they're known as the Pickham requirements, the Endangered Species Act implementation compliance measures. And so option B adds some additional regulations to our floodplain management ordinance in the Gerhardt zoning code that isn't about flood risk reduction to to life and property, but is rather about protecting endangered species habitat. FEMA has told all cities and counties that have floodplains and endangered or threatened salmon that they have to do this by July thirty first of twenty twenty five. But I'm not aware of any of our peer cities in Clatsop County or the county itself having done this yet. And as the memo outlines, and as our land use attorney and I have outlined in the in the prior meeting, we have concerns about option B being inconsistent with state land use laws regarding only using clear and objective standards for the review of housing developments. And that issue has still not been resolved. We haven't received any guidance from FEMA or the state of Oregon on how to resolve those consistency issues. We were expecting and continue to expect some larger, more well-resourced communities to try to resolve that on their own and perhaps use use their work as a model. But we don't have that information yet. And so as in June, our recommendation and the planning commission's recommendation from their May hearing would be. You know, we can probably be a little bit late with option A and we'll just do all of this at once. And FEMA has extended their deadline that they notified us of for option B from last fall to July thirty first of this year. There are some reasons to think that perhaps that even that deadline could be extended based on some. And at this point, we are now a year past FEMA's request to adopt option A. It feels like like we should do that just in case this deadline on option B to get moved, you know, a month here, six months there. So.
So Garrett, basically, we're adopting this so that this property owners in the Gerhardt area can still receive flood insurance through FEMA. Is that correct?
That's right. There is some, there's because FEMA has has officially done a community assistance visit and notified us in writing that we need to make the kinds of changes that are in option A. And they gave us a timeline for doing that. The city is at some peril of of losing its good standing in the National Flood Insurance Program by delaying adoption of option A. We haven't gotten any follow-up communications to that effect in the last year, but but yes, do doing that is is required to maintain good standing and good standing is what you need in order for property owners in Gerhardt to be eligible for subsidized flood insurance. And for property owners in the city to be eligible for certain forms of flood disaster relief after a flood and for us to be eligible as a city to receive federal grants and loans for projects in the floodplain, to the extent that that's relevant or applicable.
So Garrett, what are the consequences if they don't move the deadline for option B adoption? What are the consequences if we don't have haven't done that by thirty first of July?
The next step would be that FEMA would communicate to the city that it appears that we've failed to meet the deadline, or they would ask us to confirm that. And they would schedule a community assistance visit. And they would identify that we're not in compliance with the National Flood on that.
What do you anticipate that timeline would be?
I don't want to give you a false sense of security, but you know, at the soonest, I would think that you know, they would notify us. I mean, if if they if they were if they were aggressively dealing with this, they could notify us and and give us you know, like a couple of months probably to to deal with it. You know, like we could, we could deal with it right away at that time at the next city council meeting, for example. But it is notable that like the the region ten FEMA staff for floodplain management. Their numbers have been reduced by half or over half in the last six months. Similarly, at DLCD in Oregon, their floodplain management staff has been reduced from two to one. They have limited capacity to the extent that they can't deal with this and all of the other cities and counties that don't adopt option B. Or as we're calling it, option B by July thirty first. To the extent that they can't deal with it in like an automated batch fashion and have to prioritize. I also suspect that the city of Gerhardt wouldn't necessarily be the highest priority based on the number of properties and the value of properties and the acreage of salmon habitat that are at play here compared to some other communities. But I think it's something that we could respond to in a timely fashion and that I'm I I don't think that you'd necessarily be hearing from like FEMA about it first. Like I'm I'm paying close attention to what's happening. I'm staying in touch with other planners in the region. Visiting DLCD's webpage and the FEMA webpage and trying to stay abreast and and the webpage for the federal court that's driving FEMA's requirements in the first place and and really trying to stay abreast of of anything new that comes up.
Any other questions for Garrett?
I have more of a a comment. More maybe you can clarify that I I found the discussion in the planning commission minutes for May eighth. Very enlightening. I really appreciated the constructive and in-depth conversation that the planning commission had on this. But one thing that stood out to me was our our attorney, Peter. God bless his soul. Who I'm finding out now, now that he's passed even more than I knew when he was alive, was really knew his stuff when it came to land stuff and he was well respected in the state. And one of the things that he said was that there was some danger in going forward with option B because it is still undecided and that if the courts or something else comes down on against FEMA or FEMA withdraws, we could be left out over our skis if we have a great situation that harms some of our homeowners. Is that is that just what he said? Did I get that right?
Yeah, I remember him saying that. I mean, I think that on some level, I don't know if if we'd if we'd be at at risk and he didn't explain that that to me like what he was really thinking there. I think that we would we would staff would be put in a position of having to like not implement requirements that are in our zoning code, which we don't want to have to do if they're not clear and objective. The communities have to do that and even we we already have to do it, but we really want to minimize staff saying oh, this is in our zoning code and we have to ignore it because it's not clear and objective. And it's it adds like administrative cost of having to come back and invite city council to then amend the code again to to remove those regulations. I mean, I think, yeah, Pete Peter is a is a is a was a well-respected attorney and I I looked to his impressions and took them very seriously and you know, I think we also both are observing that we don't, we don't see other communities adopting this yet. And and we take that seriously as well. And we just know, you know, we're paying attention and and we can be responsive to changing conditions and come back and invite you to adopt them. So.
I think a question or maybe a comment. Did we not continue this hearing simply because we wanted to leave the record open in case that federal case did get settled and we would have more information on whether or not we wanted to even consider pursuing option B? I thought that was pretty much why we continued the hearing.
Yeah, it was that. It was to it was to keep it open for new information from the court and to keep it open for any new information or guidance from FEMA or DLCD on how to resolve inconsistencies between option B and state of Oregon housing laws. And there's no new information on either front.
Yeah, we're still waiting a lot of clarification from FEMA that we're not getting.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else got anything for Garrett? Okay, I think I'm going to go to ask the audience if there are any proponents that wish to speak? Are there any opponents that wish to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Tom T's two nine two. I don't see how we can make an ordinance. That's not clear. That is just it's it's a jungle. You know, it'd be like making a fire ordinance and saying, yeah, you can have a fire and you can't have a fire. It doesn't tell me anything. What they want us to do is very iffy.
Right. Well, it you're you're stating it simply. It is iffy. But if we don't do it, then we jeopardize our flood insurance. I don't have flood insurance.
Right.
But there's a lot of people that do have flood insurance. And I can't say that I would be willing to jeopardize their flood insurance because it's an iffy ordinance. We're just put it on the back burner and hold it in a burning situation, if you will, on the back burner and just see if it smokes. Because I don't know what else to do.
I know.
You know, if the federal government goes, we're going to take your insurance. You know, you're going to have to do what they want. I hate that.
How easily they could do that. Well, being they're offering something that is not clear. Well, they're changing their mind constantly.
Well, that's
There's no, I mean.
I I get it. You know, but you know, as a little city that doesn't have any resources to go after the big dog, we have to do something. And if it means agreeing to the option A and getting it passed by the thirty first and seeing what happens, then that's what we have to do. And then we gotta go back and rescind option A when FEMA goes belly up.
No, no, option A. My understanding is option A just gets us to the point of being in compliance with state law and the FEMA flood map requirements that we are required to do. It's updating policies that we already have or in ordinance that we already have. The confusing and non-objective part is option B. Which has not been recommended by the planning commission or city staff for us to adopt.
But it's the new flood maps that are questionable from FEMA. They revisited the flood maps.
Garrett's got his hand up.
Garrett.
Yeah. So just to be clear, a couple of things. This, both option A and B, neither one of them affect the boundaries of the floodplain and the area that is regulated by the city's flood hazard overlay zone. So no geographic boundary changes with either one. And then to the first point about option A versus option B. Option A really is taking care of of basic requirements that every other community in America. Well, I shouldn't say everyone. There there's some that have opted to not participate. But almost every community in America with with floodplains uses an ordinance like the one that we're trying to adopt in option A. And that is something that we were supposed to have done by a year ago and and staff and the planning commissioner recommending that we do that now. Option B is the one with a July thirty first deadline. The standards that are inside of it are in some cases ambiguous. FEMA has shown like a history in the last year of being not clear about their deadlines and they've made changes to what they say they want us to do. That's all option B, all of that stuff. So we are recommending adoption of option A. And that will not affect our floodplain boundary or the flood maps themselves.
Okay, thank you, Paul. I know for that. All right. So we're going from opponents to neutral comments. Are there any neutral comments? And you don't have a rebuttal to anything that was said. I mean, you just gave rebuttal, so we'll count that as the opponent's statement was rebutted. You know what I mean? Okay. So I'm going to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Hi, hi.
Hearing's closed. All right. Moving on. Declaration of conflict of interest for the city council meeting. All right. We are now going to go to the approval of minutes, the regular meeting and public hearing on June fourth.
Move to approve. Second word, some typos.
I have some.
All right, Sharon, go ahead.
From page two. Down towards the bottom, it says city planner Phillips referenced the statute that says all housing statute. Page three. In the largest paragraph, it starts with Eric Helfren. Go down two thirds, it says outside the tsunami indication zone. That's what I found.
Okay, on on page one, and this is really minor, but since we're making corrections anyway, after June per line after June fourth, comma, twenty twenty five. But the one that has actually changes a little bit is on page seven. Second bullet down where it says council gold attended the Cedar Awards. I also attended their board meeting and that is where they discussed their budget. And then Sharon, all my others.
Okay. Motion to accept as amended.
Motion to accept as amended.
The second. All any discussion? All those in favor? All right, moving on. Planning committee. We have the planning commission report in minutes. Everyone's copy in their packet. Everyone good with that?
Yeah, the work that they put into this and and the minutes on this discussion really helped me. I understand the the problem better.
All right. We'll go on to counselors reports. Sharon, you have something?
Yeah, I attended the Seaside Airport. We had a special meeting the other night. City of Seaside is working on updating the bylaws for all their committees, commissions, whatever. So as a committee at Seaside we went through all our second thing is to the property owner to buy the property. And a response has not been received yet.
Garrett, done it? Paul, I know.
I attended the ribbon cutting over at Trail Sand Art for the Little Art Gallery. It was a very positive event and about thirty or forty people there. It was real fun. And you should go visit it. It's right over there by their grand. Let's see it a little better. A great place to take a grand shot or someone visiting too. Had my usual meetings with Chad and did several check reviews for Justine. I attended the Clatsop County House Task Force. There we heard a presentation from a planner by the name of Gil Kelly. He's was a planner for Vancouver, B.C. A number of places. This is in Oregon and specifically talked about an empty homes tax. He recommended for cities that are considering that one to one and a half percent of the assessed value annually. In Vancouver, they used it to purchase land to build affordable housing. And this is about ten years ago in in Vancouver, B.C. They had condo high rises that were basically being bought by foreign investors and were sitting empty. And the people who worked and lived in Vancouver had no place to live. He also talked about, he's the president of the Board of Thousand Friends of Oregon. Their mission is to foster approaches to develop and conserve affordable housing in Oregon. That was interesting to learn about. Finally, I did spend about an hour on the phone with Peter Box a couple of days before his demise. He answered questions I had about the second street property and also next steps for the public safety building, specifically. Capital campaign. Capital campaign. That and leveraging sort of interests.
Thanks. Trinity Episcopal Church in Portland. He was very well thought. Dana?
Okay, county firefighters that make minimums. I did not, unfortunately, I saw whatnot. I did some research and I was, I wanted to share with folks something that I was a little impressed with. And that is that since two thousand nineteen, our fire department has applied for and received grants in amounts exceeding a million dollars. And that's not including the fundraising that they do through the Fireman's Ball and all of the other stuff that they do. So I thought that was pretty impressive. Worked on suggestions to update the Sunday work hours ordinance. And then I sent over a letter to all of you that's in our correspondence and I, somebody pointed out to me that I completely dropped the ball and failed to explain exactly what I intended or wanted to see happen with the ordinance on Sunday. So I created an amended letter and maybe later when we get to that point, we can discuss it. But basically, my intent was to allow contractors, commercial contractors, commercial developers, general contractors, landscape construction professionals, landscape care contractors and employees of such entities to work within the city limits between nine AM and five PM on Sunday, provided that they are not using noisy tools. So if they're painting indoors or changing the faucet or doing something that doesn't isn't going to interfere with the neighbor's ability to enjoy their homes, I think that we should look very hard at that. Also, I did a cut and paste where I changed the contractors' hours and that was not my intention either. So that's the updated thing that I put on your desk and it will be posted tomorrow. Wanted to remind everybody, there's a beach cleanup on July fifth at seven AM. I hope everybody will come out and help us. That is the state's responsibility, but unfortunately they don't have the resources. And if somebody doesn't get out there and take care of it, that stuff's gonna end up either in the ocean or up in our community. So in years past, our community has been great about going out and cleaning up. We normally do it at nine o'clock, but unfortunately because high tide is so early, is at ten twenty or ten thirty this morning or this July fifth, we need to get out there pretty early. Buckets will be set out, bags, you just fill them up and somebody, usually there's people driving up and down in trucks, ready to collect your bags from you if they get too heavy. Or if not, you can drop it right back off where you picked up the bag. Just make sure it's tied. I do ask that you do not bury fires. That is, that seem counterintuitive. If you see a fire, you wanna smother it, yes. But you don't wanna bury it to where people can't see it because it remains hot and hidden under that sand. And the only thing that you do not wanna do with something really hot is hide it so people don't see it and step on it. So if there's a fire, it's better that people recognize that there's a fire there. I'm not saying allow it to continue to burn, but don't bury it. Parade lineup is at ten thirty on July fourth and I will have a float and you'll have to show up to see what it is. And August first coming up, I will be attending the League of Oregon City Small Cities Meeting in Tillamook. I've been following the push to adjust the TLT money distribution across the state and I'm sad to report that it fell short. It looked very, very positive and it really looked like they were gonna succeed. And recently I learned that they fell a little bit short, but the proponents are already swearing that they're gonna make another run at it again. So expect to see that again. CMH, on the other hand, did receive the six million in funding that it requested to do their improvements up there. I also talked to Representative Jabadi about some funding that we needed here as far as pipes and for our public safety building, just reminding him constantly that we need him to help us also. And then last but not least, Cedar would like an opportunity to create a better connection with your heart and to that. And they emailed me, myself and a couple of the mayor and Chad in an attempt to facilitate that. So we'll, we'll work on getting together and see if we can get them to come and do a presentation for us in the future so everybody understands their value. And that's it.
Great, thanks a lot. I was thinking that the ordinance for the noise Sunday work hours would be on a work session. Because we've got a couple of things we need to work on. But we don't need all of the staff here when we do a work session, so everyone can take it easy. And we'll just beat it out of each other what we want and what we don't want.
I wanted to write it up to give you some time to chew over it and be ready to beat me up and
Oh, there's no beating.
Point out, point out the cockroach, my yogurt, if I overdo something or I messed up the dates or times again.
Sure. No, ma'am, I was not giving the order. That's why I skipped me entirely. Okay, moving on, chief of police.
Thank you. Good evening. Not a lot to talk about yet. The stats in front of you. Just to note, we had nine assists rendered, nine disturbances, a suspicious circumstances, made eighty-eight traffic stops, three welfare checks, wrote twenty citations, cleared eighty-four cases. This month, we only have three from the month that are active. Provided fifty-nine warnings. Sixty-four traffic, actually sixty-four traffic warnings. What is of note is we had a hundred and seventy-one police contacts in the law of usual CD numbered. We're doing that with three people, so that's pretty good. And we're out busy and I actually had a week off in this month. So if you've been higher than I've been here for those days. The only other thing is we just had, before this meeting, the officers and I got together and did a real quick tactical operations, planning forward forth. So went over our ops plan and kind of where we're at, what we're looking at, and how we're gonna attack the issues that we've seen in the past. And so finish cross for us, everyone. We should have a fun fourth, I hope. So.
Good.
Questions?
Doesn't look like. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
The fire chief's gonna be absent for this meeting?
Yeah, they've got a big training going on. They did not, we're not even gonna get to the report yet. Those will be coming two years.
Sure. All right. Ask for money.
In revenue account ten zero zero one eight, the city received their annual two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five contract agreement from the Gearhart Rural Fire Protection District to provide fire medical and protection services, which was two hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars. So we're thankful for that partnership. The city building department has been providing water support services related to construction and or development. An invoice was issued to the city's water department. Was issued from the city's water department to the building department to financially compensate for the building department's services that they're providing. During the construction development process, the building department does water permitting through a cella. It's an electronic system now of fee collections and processing. So people pay with credit cards and do other things. I ultimately enter them into our system, but the building assistant kind of coordinates and manages that until I get the money. They do the coordination of required city staff approvals. So all of the water, all of the development has to go through a process where the building person has to coordinate our public works director's signatures and some other things for water. And they have to provide customer support to people who are coming in, maybe what size of water meter that they might need, what type of sprinkler system. They do some other types of support that are water related. The city is finding that as more complicated pieces of property are being developed and or researched, which I think the key word there is researched, it doesn't necessarily really mean that these people are paying for permits. They sometimes have a piece of property they want to come in and they're asking questions, a lot of questions that really translate into the money. Because they're kind of difficult pieces, they might have funny setbacks, and so they have to provide a lot of support with no financial compensation. So revenue, we did invoice, the building department invoiced the water department for staff time. And the revenue was placed in the building account forty zero zero seven miscellaneous. And the expenditure was charged to the water account in thirty thirty forty-seven. So there is a check written for it, so you can see it in there. And then we put it into the water account just to provide that support. The city contracted with a company to replace two hundred and eighty-five old meters with new, more accurate ones, which will allow remote digital reads. This expense was charged to thirty thirty eighty-five water meter replacement. And the city's goal is to move from using a third-party meter reader company to having our public works employees out reading those meters on a monthly basis. The physical meters were purchased earlier this year with the American Rescue Plan Federal grant. So we purchased all the meters and then the water department paid to have a third-party person come in and replace those two hundred and eighty-five meters. We still have some difficult meters to replace, ones that maybe require a little bit more work and are maybe bigger than a one inch. So we still have a little bit of work to do on finishing up that program. All budgeted transfers were implemented this year. So the the transfers that were made in June include twenty thousand dollars from the general fund to the building reserve fund, thirty thousand dollars from the general fund to the fire apparatus reserve fund, ten thousand five hundred from the general fund to the police car reserve fund, seven thousand five hundred from the water operating fund to the public works equipment reserve fund, and forty thousand from the water operating fund to the water reserve fund. So we felt like, Chad and I talked about it and we kind of looked at our numbers and we felt like the balances were adequate this year to go ahead and make those transfers. So we transferred them in June. Other noteworthy expenditures were some legal notices for planning and the budgeting process. Quarterly payment to the Gearhart Volunteer Fire Association for the volunteers' quarterly gas clothing reimbursement, which was in ten thirteen sixty. And vehicle updating for the new fire vehicles in seventy-four seventy-four ninety-nine. And we look forward to the new fiscal year. We're off and running.
Great. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to take fifteen seconds of silence for Peter Watts in remembrance. Thank you very much. Peter will be missed. All right, city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Yes, Peter will be very much missed. Thank you, James Watt. He, I, it's we're working on a replacement. I'm gonna discuss that a little bit more later in the agenda. I don't, tonight, we weren't able to get an attorney with the firm that I signed with quite yet because of scheduling issues, but I think we're in pretty good hands as we have already discussed many of these issues with Mr. Peter Watts. For those of you that don't know, Peter did pass away on the twelfth of this last month. And his services were beautiful and we're gonna continue on his legacy by doing a good job and keeping the city, your heart, out of trouble. Any questions about that? If we get more into the attorney situation. As far as updates, you've got my update sheet. I, not a lot of significant meetings, but a lot of work has been going in. The staff and I have been spending a lot of time working on the Fourth of July. We are really well prepared this year. We have a great team, good plan, and we have have discussed all of the issues that your heart could possibly have and prepared as best that we can. And there's still going to be some issues in town with some folks with fireworks and things. Keep in mind that the nine-one-one operators will be very busy. So make sure that if you do call the city, that it is in fact an emergency and not so much an irritants. Make your best to respond to all of those, but we'll have our officers on. And I think we've made some changes to keep things a little bit safer, especially on the beach approach. So we're anxious to see how that goes. We're as prepared as we can be. We have the Fourth of July coming up, the parade, as was said earlier, this lineup for the parade, ten thirty, be there as early as you can. We're gonna start closing down the roadways about ten o'clock, especially on Marion, just for safety for all the kids and that that are riding around on other bicycles. Have the parade after, at the end of the parade, we'll end up at the fire station with hot dogs, free hot dogs. If you'd like to leave a donation, that would be fantastic. Fire department will also be sending, selling some T-shirts and some sweatshirts and that sort of thing. I believe they have the dump tank set up again this year, so that'll be fun. And we expect a really good event for that. We'll be doing some cleanup after the events. And then Saturday, we have the beach cleanup, as Dana's talking about, earlier setting so that we can get in there prior to the Thank you. Tides. And then we will begin setting up for the street dance. We're gonna be setting up and any volunteers that wanna come and assist are welcome to. About five thirty is when the setup is going to be. And I believe the start time is at seven? Thirty. Thirty. Thank you. Yes, seven thirty, street dance start time. They've got a good DJ there. Some things for the kids to do, photo booth. And just a good time. There's gonna be some food available in the restaurants that are open for that night. So we're looking forward to the street dance and then we'll be cleaning that up at about ten thirty at night after the street dance. So any volunteers that are up late at night wanna come and hang out with us, you're welcome to. It is a really good event. Very happy people. Good time. Take you away from all the news. We also, we lost a few other members this last month. Of course, Bob McKeown, who passed away a hundred and two, was an amazing man, moved to the grade school here when it was across the way. Knew every nook and cranny of your heart and was just as sharp as a tack up until the end. We will very much miss him, but I understand the dog people will be in the parade, so it'll be a lot. That's what I was told earlier today. So gush fingers, all that goes on. But that'll be a nice memory of Bob McKeown. He's not a guy easily forgotten anyway. Another loss that we had in our community was a past city councillor, Al Carter. Al Carter was the city councillor when I was hired here at the city. He was an amazing councillor. He had been ill for some time and he had finally passed a couple of weeks ago. Al Carter was fantastic about coming in and saying, Chad, I'm gonna come and give you some trouble tonight during the city council meeting, but here's what it's about. He said, be ready. And he was a very good, very good councillor and a mentor of mine. So he will be missed also and his wife, she carries on. That's my update for now. Any questions?
Thank you.
There is no public safety building, pulling update, is that correct?
Yeah, actually, excuse me. Yes, thank you. I forgot that we put that there. There is an update. So we've been working with Abe Richardson. She owns a firm, a PR firm, and she's put us in touch with a company that does surveying. I have spoken to the mayor about this earlier today and we have a quote for that. We're currently getting out and doing two other quotes. Our intention is to put together a survey for the community to get as much information for the community on the public safety building and their opinions about it. And there is a meeting that I haven't told you about yet, Ms. Palena. I hope you're available for Monday at
Eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock. I'm gonna double check that to make sure it hasn't changed. I wrote down that note for you earlier. But Monday at eleven o'clock, if you are available, Ms. Palena, I'd like you and the mayor to come and meet with me to meet with Paige to have this discussion because there are some questions that we need to answer. We are also in the middle of starting to search for other public or survey companies because the amount of the survey is probably gonna be close to nineteen thousand dollars to accomplish. We're hoping it's a little bit less. So we're also getting some quotes for some of the We're hoping it's a little bit less, so we're also getting some quotes for some of the folks. But that meeting is important on Monday, if you can make it. I'll make sure that you get the calendar played. Got it, yeah?
I'll just.
Okay.
Sure.
So we'll report on that soon. Now, we have budgeted for additional monies to be spent towards the public safety building. So this isn't a decision that the council needs to make, as long as the city does its job in procurement um side of things. So uh, if this looks like it's the right direction and we get a good price, and it's what it is that we'd like to accomplish, with your help, we'll move forward with that uh to make sure that we get some survey results, I think you're going to be wise. So that the city council can make a decision to move forward on that uh with public safety.
All right. Thank you, Chad. All right, moving on, we're going to public communications written in oral. And right now, we're going to go through the list of the mail we have. We have um a letter from Becky Graham about the trees on Second. Tim Mansell about a complaint. I believe he withdrew that complaint, didn't he, because of misinformation he received?
That's, that's essentially what the letter is, the letter.
That is?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, good for him. And we got a letter from uh Diana Mansell and uh we're going to sit tight on anything with the Nea Coxey Creek and let the county come to us and tell us we've done wrong, and then we'll address it. We're not going to spend a lot of time going over papers that are outdated and possibly not even valid anymore. Again, late correspondence, we've got a court-appointed special advocates thank you letter, or um there's grant donation. We have correspondents telling us about the recreational immunity laws that were enacted. Please. We have Dana's amended letter, which we will talk about at the
What section?
Thank you. And uh, we have a letter via email to uh just a second. From BF Law, Andrew Stumpf, concerning uh a code enforcement matter that Chad was involved with. Now, we also have one person who signed up, and that's Shannon Smith.
Yep.
Your name and address, please. You have five minutes.
I have one. Okay. One sec. I have a picture for a thousand words. Is this okay? Put it down here.
Yeah, no, I'm surprised we'll be able to get the camera that way, but. Love to.
Okay. How about your address, Chad? Let's start the clock.
I'll wait for you.
Good job. Thank you, Chad.
You're welcome.
I have a banner statement. You guys see? Shannon Smith, seven-seven Port Pacific Way, here in Oregon. That's my building. I bought it in two thousand and seven, saved it for demolition. The city was also working with some interesting developers back then. Three different houses were planned here, besides my house right now that's in the back corner. They decided not to demolish it. I was in the background planning to buy it, which is what I did, to save it for future generations for Gearheart. I'm glad I did, and I know lots of people are as well. So here we are in two thousand twenty-five. Here's two possible scenarios for the future. No trees, as you would normally, or lots of taller trees. Same trees as many of them are there today. This is two hundred years of trees, two hundred maybe, three hundred years of trees, if you want to say three thousand twenty-five, or you got two thousand twenty-seven. My point, we need to be visionary like our founders were. It's different than plans or comprehensive plans. And if we think about beyond just the people, we think about the place, its history, its value, its meaning. I believe that people here want to see this view and to know this is what we hold most precious and priceless, because when they're gone, they're gone in this scenario. They want to know it'll be here for them for future generations, like we were able to inherit from the folks that started this town. It's that important. I know there's our bonds and building developers, et cetera, but this place is unique. Unique from many other towns along the coast. So I know that there's things in process, but I want the public to know we can make change here. We can decide to save this. There are several ways. It doesn't have to go the way of just another home site. So I'd like people to know that by Friday night, Fourth of July, there'll be the website again for neacoxecreek.org. It will be a place to gather folks's interest in this and their desire to protect it. So I'm being rather defiant in some way, because I know it matters. Um, it's not just that we have a beach and a dome. We have a forest that is just pristine and still wild, and we should keep it that way. Sometime in two thousand twelve to two thousand thirteen, the land behind me here went from unbuildable to undeveloped. No one got noticed from the surrounding communities. What changed? We always assumed this would always be here like that. I've talked to many people, said, really? You can cut that down and build a house right there? Yes. So, without being said, I have an interesting statement I'd like to be based upon, inspiration from Jane Goodall and David Attenborough. Two thousand twenty-five is halfway through the United States' decade of the ocean. The countries participated and committed to protect the ocean, thirty percent of it by decade's end. Right now, only three percent of the ocean is protected, three percent. And yet with that three percent, the ocean around it has seen a resurgence, restoring the fisheries for the, all the overfished places on the planet. Corals coming back, all sorts of things that they didn't imagine could happen. This is a moment of change for us and for the planet. Together, we can face that challenge by making the future happen, by imagining what it can be today. I think communities of all people must imagine that future. It's our responsibility. It was then for our better, because it is now. We need to act with love and make the future ours now, because it depends on it. It depends on us making those choices. When we save the sea, we save the world. When we save the forest, we save the world. So this is our forest. If each visitor in our community said, we can do our part, each community adds together. They all add together and they add up, and we eventually save our state, we save our country, we save the world. It's, it's piece by piece. You all know that, but we have to act in the moment of time before it's too late.
Twenty seconds.
Let us be that, our centuries visionary leaders. Let us be those people. We have to imagine that we can do what we must do, because our children wants to. We would like them to know this in the future, and it's too precious to waste. It's ours for the keeping and for the protecting for the next hundred years. You gotta make a choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Is there anyone else wishing to make comment tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on. We're going to ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance nine four six, ordinance amending the start time of city council meetings. It's already eight o'clock. We started at six. Great. All right. Chad, do you want to give us a synopsis?
Sure. I'll read the first paragraph of the synopsis. Thank you, council. And Mayor, at the May City Council meeting, Mayor Smith requested council consider ordinance changing start time of the regular council meeting from seven to six. When the draft was presented in June, discussions proposed the possibility of amending all meeting types and additional language addressing the flow of back-to-back, the flow of back-to-back meetings. The items tabled with the direction of City Attorney Peter Wester review all sections of applicable ordinances with his unexpected passing decided to include all ordinances potentially affected by amending conditional language from the current draft and package of the council review. When the package released, the council will have had time, as we have, to review the ordinance copies and propose further amendments to the draft during the meeting. If so, the chosen color highlight has been used to help cross ordinance across the ordinance copies. Thank you, Ms. Christie, for doing that. Uh, so your council options are to approve ordinance nine four six, where you want spice by title only, and we will bring it back next month for another reading, and then it will become uh ordinance thirty days later. Or we can make some further changes if you'd like, or take another action as desired by council. Uh, we don't have any recommendation of the staff. Uh, legal analysis is there. Um, and the ordinances in the past have been changed. Um, there really are no issues. If the ordinance itself was passed as it is, per six P M start date, we still could hold meetings earlier than that and then say that the council meetings is uh immediately following afterwards. Peter did apply on that. Um, others than that, this is a pretty clean change. If you have any questions, we'll do our best.
Okay. Is anyone interested in making a motion?
I move to approve ordinance nine four six, amending the start time of city council meetings.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
So I'm just curious, is, if we have an executive session or whatever before city council, does that mean we're starting like at five?
Yes. We're just, we're just shifting everything back, so staff can get home sooner instead of these nine and ten o'clock meetings that happen.
I have a question as well.
Sure.
So under the legal analysis, it says that there is no legal issue with state and regular council meeting immediately following, and didn't see that as a written change. Is that something that we will make on a case-by-case basis then?
Gives us flexibility.
That is? Case by case?
Yes.
So that answers your question?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Against?
Aye.
All right. You got that just in?
Yeah.
I'll read it once by title only.
Read it once by title only.
We have ordinance number nine four six, ordinance fixing the time of regular council meetings. We have ordinance six nine seven, and then section one, ordinance six five three.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, ordinance nine four seven, ordinance amending text of the City of Gearheart zoning ordinance, section three point one zero flood hazard overlay zone. Can you give us a synopsis, Garrett? It's just the repeat of what you've already said on option A?
Yes, the ordinance specifically adapts option A.
Motion from anyone?
Motion, we approve option A, the planning commission's recommendation of ordinance uh nine four seven, and ordinance amending the text to the city's sun code, section three point one zero flood hazard overlay zone. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So passes?
Mayor, I'll read that once by title only for you. One. Uh, ordinance number nine four seven, and ordinance amending text of the City of Gearheart zoning ordinance, section three point one zero flood hazard overlay zone. We'll bring this back to you again next month, and then thirty days later, it'll become ordinance.
All right, moving ahead, ordinance nine four eight, an ordinance granting a franchise to Quest Corporation, D B A CenturyLink Q C, to operate and maintain telecommunications, telecommunications system in the city of Gearheart. Chad, can you give us a synopsis?
Sure. Uh, Quest CenturyLink's franchise agreement with the city of Gearheart has expired. They provide landline service to customers in Gearheart. The attached updated draft agreement renewed the term for ten years. As a majority of the city's franchise agreements have been entered in via ordinance, the city presented to the council's ordinance nine four eight to maintain consistency in policy practices. You have the option to approve once by title only or take another action. Uh, we have seen uh the franchise fees for Quest and uh CenturyLink uh kind of fall a little bit over the years as technology has changed. Uh, so really, the city only receives about, well, this year, it's received one thousand six hundred seventy-five. In the past, it's been about two, three thousand, so it's not a large franchise agreement, but one nonetheless.
All right, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance nine four eight, reading once by title only.
Second?
Second.
Yes, second. Okay, any discussion?
You have a question. Do we know how many people serve in Gearheart?
No, I don't. We don't necessarily get that information.
Yeah, I'm just reading this, and I'm thinking, okay, what are the advantages versus what are the disadvantages to Gearheart? I don't, so my question would be, are there any disadvantages to approving this?
No, the only other thing, and I discussed this earlier with the mayor too, is the city has the ability to go up to a five percent franchise fee for all friend, uh, you know, all companies doing business within our right ways. And I think that we're going to do, uh, when we negotiate any future franchise, push for that five percent. Didn't quite get there here on this one, because we just, I didn't learn about that in time and that this franchise agreement is so small, there really wouldn't make much of a difference. Um, so I don't have any concerns. They're good to work with. They're good partners within the city. Uh, they behave themselves and they act adequately in our right ways. Uh, I don't think that there's any downside.
And it's important you have the landlines that are going in emergency.
Some people are actually moving back to this these days, yeah. Through that.
Oh, wait a minute. Are the landlines even going to be working even?
That depends on the emergency.
You've got the whole phone system, possibly, yeah.
We have bad earthquake, though. Was the landline still?
Oh, earthquake, no, I was thinking power outage. Uh, you know, it's uh yet to be seen. Shouldn't, no way. No problems. Yes, we have a motion second.
Is that the end of discussion? Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A opposed? Okay, Chad.
Ordinance nine four eight, ordinance granting a franchise to Quest Corporation, franchise to Quest Corporation, D B A CenturyLink Q C on behalf of itself and its operating affiliates, CenturyLink, to operate and maintain a telecommunications system in the city of Gearheart.
All right, moving on. Resolution one zero zero eight, resolution adjusting water rates in the city of Gearheart. Synopsis, Chad?
Thank you, Mayor Council. In two thousand twenty-four, Gearheart City Council approved two water rate increases, implementing water conservation block pricing. and approved a much needed water ordinance update that addressed processing and legalities. These changes stemmed from recommendations made within twenty twenty three water rate study that we did. Included was the goal for the council revisit an annual water rate increase. Prior to budget approval, last year's budget process determined a ten percent increase was needed in order to keep future sustainability on track. For year twenty five twenty six, budget process proposed and approved a five point three seven percent increase. However, in regards to tapping fees, countywide comparison was done. It was determined that there are substantial, we were substantially undercharging for those parts and services. What we are, what we currently charge is not, in most cases, enough to cover the vendor invoicing. Therefore, a seventy one point eight five percent increase proposed for those tapping fees, not the water rates, the tapping fees and services with flexibility to increase as needed depending on the scenario. Draft customer information sheet for the water bill is also open for your review. So your council options are resolved through approved resolution one zero zero eight, which the resolution shows a five point three seven percent increase plus the increase in the tapping fees is just whether options to make changes and motion to approve some energy or to take another action. Staff recommends the council move to approve resolution one zero zero eight. And we have recommended motion there. And the analysis and financial analysis is also included.
I move to approve resolution one zero zero eight to increase the water rate to Gerhard by five point three seven percent and tapping fees by seventy one point eight five percent for fiscal year twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six.
Second. Okay, I would like the council to consider making it an even ten percent. And that is to help build our water fund. It's a five dollar increase. I think it's all, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be a bank breaker for anybody. But I am very concerned about the water fund and making sure that it is well funded. Because we're using it as, as a fund that is helping pay for projects that are necessary for the state, for the city, and for the personnel that are working here. So I would like to, if you agree, rescind your motion. And I'd like to make one for ten percent.
I do not agree. I do not want to rescind my motion. I'm worried with our water conservation efforts. We're still in the infancy stage with those, and what I'm afraid of is that if we suddenly increase the costs too much, people are gonna conserve too much water and we're going to undermine our efforts. I think that we have to find a balance, and as we do increases, we have to do it carefully and take the temperature and see what type, you know, what the cost and effect is before we make huge increases. I did, I haven't group, agreed with the increases in the past that have been more than what were recommended, but I think that I'd like to be cautious, especially with some of the other things that we have going on in the city that, you know, we're citizens are concerned about money and how much they're gonna have to spend.
So there's a motion and a second. Does anyone?
Could we split the difference and raise it eight percent then?
Well, I, um, yeah, I could probably persuade it. I just do not want to, I mean, five dollars isn't much money right now. But it's five dollars on top of what we've already done, and then possibly if we were to potentially have a bond, you know, I mean, that's another hundred dollars for me a month easily. And it all adds up, and I'm living on, on a strict income for the rest of my life, so I wanna make sure that we're careful.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you. We have historically low water rates. Um, and so we're kind of playing catch up on us at this point.
I, I, I agree with that. I, I, it's not, I, I'm not arguing that point. What I'm afraid of is that people like me who are watching their budget very carefully are then going to say, well, if it's gonna cost me more, at some point I'm gonna use less, and then the city's not making the money because they're not, I'm not using it.
But you would be able to go to eight percent? Is that what you just said?
Yeah, I, I, I can be reasonable. I can be persuaded.
All right.
I'm uncomfortable. It's seven dollars and fifty cents. Okay, go ahead.
What percentage is that?
Seven point five.
Okay. All right. Well, if you rescind your motion, I will make a motion that we increase it to seven point five.
Okay, I will rescind my motion.
Will you rescind your second?
Motion I second.
Okay, I've made a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much, people. Moving on to, and we don't need to read this once.
Oh, it's a resolution.
Yes, ma'am. This is resolution one zero zero nine, resolution supporting application for a housing planning assistance grant for the residential land readiness project by the Klatsev Regional Housing Task Force and Klatsev County. Chad?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. The housing planning assistance grant for the residential land readiness project. Uh, the city of Gerhard and other jurisdictions participating in the Klatsev Regional Housing Task Force, which we have been, are, are developing a project proposal for the authority department land conservation development housing planning assistance grant program to advance residential land readiness throughout Klatsev County, including in the city of Gerhard. If funded, the project would begin around January twenty twenty six and end about June twenty twenty seven. Scope of the project would be to evaluate the development readiness of selected residential lands in and adjacent to each jurisdiction and identify local government actions to improve development readiness. Participating jurisdictions are in the process of identifying focused locations and developing grant proposal, and the proposal is due August fourth, twenty twenty five. The grant program does not require local passion kind of match, and the city is not offering or committing any of that, any match by endorsing the project. Staff does anticipate spending around three hours contributing to the proposal and around twenty hours on the project if awarded. The grant proposal is being developed by Klatsev County staff. Klatsev County would be the formal grant recipient and the project manager through the D L C, he selected the consultant that would be assigned to work on the project. Project builds on and follows the same regional collaboration while with the housing planning assistance grant project to complete housing infrastructure and buildable land reports for Gerhard and other Klatsev County jurisdictions over the last two years. There is the resolution affirms city's general support for the participation in the project. You can resolve to approve, make changes, or take other action. Staff does recommend that council motion to approve the resolution one zero zero nine show support of the city applying for the grant. The resolution is attached, and this would give the city a lot of information that they can forward if they were to do anything such as a, uh, this would give us information such as urban value expansion if the city did decide to do that or other areas that are close and within us, and then to take another look at what may we do have available in the city of Gerhard and how that has been developed. So there's a lot of information. There is no changes that are being proposed at this point, even though this committee wants to finish with the grant, make a move with some recommendations for the city of Gerhard for your consideration in the future.
I have questions.
I'll do my best. Garrett's gonna appear to back me up, and why not, I believe you've also been attending some of these meetings, but I'm not sure who involved in this.
Not so much.
Okay.
Okay, so I didn't really understand this, to be honest. I mean, I sort of understand it, but what is residential land readiness? I don't know what that term means.
The various states of the land that we have, I think, I, and Garrett, correct me if I'm wrong, this also has to do with, you know, our ability to develop land due to our available water resources, due to and things such as that. So it's really a, it's study in the area surrounding Gerhard and what its future looks like and how Gerhard could participate in either bringing these into the city of Gerhard or not, and at least quantify a lot of the information about the property that's around Gerhard so that we can make better decisions in the future.
But wouldn't we have access to that information anyway? We didn't, even if we didn't participate in them?
Garrett?
Yeah, so the project is an opportunity to dig deeper into understanding infrastructure limitations. In Gerhard's case, it could be water supply limitations. Another potential area is if if there's aspects of our zoning ordinance that put residential land developers into sort of catch twenty twos, sort of situations that are just unreasonably difficult to work through. And if they, for example, if city council in the end found that they don't serve the city in their current form, it'd be, you know, the report would serve as a basis for potentially making changes later. So it's a, it's an opportunity to look at a variety of issues that could affect the developability of housing. It will be up to the city to provide some guidance on issues that we want to focus on and any locations we want to focus on. So in that regard, yes, there's information that's available to us already. But the project is an opportunity to explore those potential issues in more depth and come up with some potential solutions for planning commission or y'all to consider.
I, I guess the reason I'm asking those questions because is it worth the trade off of twenty three staff hours? We're already slammed with stuff that staff is trying to handle. So is it worth the trade off?
Uh, from the city administrator standpoint, yes, that is an excellent question. But I think that when we take advantage of these grants and then we participate with our information that they would be requiring of us, and we get a lot of, I'm hoping to garner a lot of information about our surrounding area and how Gerhard is growing, not growing, needs to grow, needs to, uh, definite, uh, what utilities to look at. The information is very valuable to us.
Right, but wouldn't Garrett have access to that information and can bring that us?
I'm sure if he did, it would take more than twenty hours to put together.
He's gonna have to bring it to us anyway because we're gonna, he's gonna do a presentation if it comes down to something where we need this, right? I'm not trying to be different, but I'm just trying to.
No, that's exactly right, and he would have to provide that information if we did have to move forward, but, and it could take us, because again, we're small. We don't have the staff like other places doing. I think what we're doing is we're multiplying our efforts. These twenty hours that we are giving towards this project is going to turn into a much better return on that investment in the information that we get back. So carefully, I would suggest that we approve this so that we can get that information because really we don't need it necessarily, not without a whole lot of time.
Any other question? A motion?
Motion to approve ordinance and one zero zero nine, resolve to approve.
Seconding one. Discussion. Moving on, and move the new business.
Representation. Motherfucker under the city charter, uh, of the contract rules, particularly on emergency, which this is our time sensitive situation. The contract was signed last week due pending business required legal assistance. However, I wanted to give you all the opportunity to review the terms, share your concerns in a public setting. Should be noted that while B E H has agreed to take us on temporarily, it made it clear that they don't have the capacity to take us on full time. This will remain available, they will remain available only until we formally fill the vacancy through the R I P. process. The R I P. has been published. The R I P. has been out, emailed out to a bunch of big Morgan cities. Also emailed a lot of law firm, law firms in Portland, Salem area. And so we entered into this contract. We have worked with Chad Jacobs before he assisted us in our campaign ordinance, and he did a fantastic job. Uh, he was recommended by Peter Dunn, and he is prepared and doing us a favor by taking us on in for Peter. So it's really an update. Unless you have any other questions at this point.
What do you anticipate will, would be their time fulfillment of this? I mean, we're talking six months, we're talking a year, are we talking three months?
No, the, the R I P. process is really a two month process, somewhere near there. And so bringing the R I Ps, uh, we condensed it as much as we could. I don't have the R I P. in front of me for what the, uh, the date is for making this decision. Can you hear me now, Ms. Christie?
People in town.
Can you hear me okay? No matter what company's using it, it's still the same. That's true. Okay, Christie, can you hear me now?
Went past its dead time.
What, the internet?
Yeah, record.
It's revealing. Chad. It needs to go to nine o'clock. It's just stolen.
So it's, the internet connection's fast right now. Or Wi-Fi.
So his internet connection is on start fast?
Yeah, you can just test it. You have Wi-Fi access. Google it. Internet's amazing. When it works. It's over. Yeah, that's when it works. Okay. Okay. We're as good as we can. We, we have internet outage and a few things for a loop. So it is being recorded.
The bandwidth is just real. Can you hear me?
And we can hear her. Yes, we can.
The bandwidth is really low, so I would just get through it as quickly as you can because I don't know.
Questionnaires got it.
Fast. How fast and loud?
Yes, sir. All right, so this is an authorization to execute O dot cooperative improvement agreement. Uh, authorization to execute O dot cooperative improvement agreement number, I'm gonna let you read that later. Uh, project name, this is for the U S one oh one Pacific Way Gearhart Improvement Project background. The background is that the Oregon Department of Transportation is undertaking a federally and state funded infrastructure improvement project at the intersection of the U S one oh one and Pacific Way. The project includes replacement of the existing traffic signal, installation of a stormwater system, construction of new sidewalks along U S one oh one and Pacific Way, ADA curb ramp remediation on U S one oh one. O D A will manage all aspects of the design permitting, instruction and funding. The project is listed in the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty seven statewide transportation improvement program. And there's a key number for reference. Council has a motion to authorize the city administrator to execute the cooperative improvement agreement with O D A or take other actions. Uh, I've gone through the agreements and was concerned about some things to be aware of. Um, power costs are one of the obligations. We will be paying for the power to operate this light as we are already doing now. Sidewalk maintenance, sidewalks will be added in, ADA sidewalks will actually come a little bit farther into Gearhart and it will be our responsibility to take care of those sidewalks that are on the city property that will not be on the, uh, O D A right away. So the City of Gearhart is getting, uh, some sidewalk out of this, not a lot, but a little bit. Um, and it'll be up to us to, uh, maintain that sidewalk. Uh, ADA compliance, of course, is really what's driving this project. Uh, O D A got into a little bit of trouble because that's not an ADA compliance intersection, so that's what they are remedying and that's why it's priority. Lane restrictions during the maintenance, the city, any city work that impacts traffic flow will require coordination with O D A and we're okay with that because we don't have any big plans. Termination clauses are included. O D A reserves the right to terminate the agreement unilaterally if Gearhart fails performance obligations, which you can maintain the sidewalks and potentially some of the drainage or if funding disappears, which can happen. We all saw the news today. I, identification, indemnification requirements. Uh, Gearhart must ensure its contractors identify the state and cannot allow them to act as legal representatives to say without approval, but the ground needs to be contracts, so that's not an issue. Contractors and maintenance informant, uh, enforcement, general provision number nine, if Gearhart fails to maintain its obligations, example, the ADA sidewalks, O D A may step in and bill us for those costs. Those are the only things that I really saw that the city was going to be, uh, held accountable for. I think this is a good deal for the city and it would be nice to have that intersection updated. Any questions for me?
No, I don't.
So are you good?
Oh, I just wanted to, to say that if we were to pass this, I would be concerned that I, I would want the city to do everything it could to support the businesses down there that would be impacted by it doing whatever we can to advertise they're still open and, um, you know, remaining in, in close contact with them to get out, turn up any falls that happen quickly.
Excellent point. The businesses were notified, uh, months ago and they did have meetings with most of those business and property owners out there, talking to them about the plan. Some parking lots will be affected because some of the parking lots are in O D A right away and city right away for that, but those are being, um, discussed and so planning is not quite finalized, but, uh, it's in its final draft. And there's still, as you see, you go out there, there's still a lot of engineers out there taking measurements. So recommendation is that the council authorize, uh, you to execute the cooperative improvement agreement with O D A.
And we don't need to read that number we're doing. We'll just go with the cooperative agreement, improvements agreement, motion?
I moved that we approved the agreement with O D A.
We authorized the city administrator.
City administrator.
To authorize. Yeah, okay. The O D A Cooperative Improvement Agreement for the U S one oh one Pacific Way project.
Hold on a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And this is new business, uh, last month. Peter said we had to bring it to the agenda. It wasn't on the agenda. I wasn't in town to talk to Chad about it, but describers error on the tree ordinance were, oh, solar, it's solar panel that they dropped. The word panel is a word that we used in describing what solar meant in the trees. So I would like to have it amended so the panel is placed in the tree ordinance in the right location.
Okay. We can bring that to you during the next meeting if you'd like, uh, with an adjustment to that ordinance. Write it out to update that.
Okay, well, we can pass it now and then you can bring it to us and we can okay it, right? Because otherwise we'll have two months without having panel in there.
I thought you told me that the scribner's error was, was corrected.
Yeah, I was incorrect. Uh, because I was thinking of something else that we were talking about and it was about solar, so my apologies on that. And I do really need to make some changes to this particular part of the direction by the ordinance to correctly describe what it is that we mean by solar access. I have to tell them that, but, um, as long as we're very specific, I think we can go that way.
Okay. All right, then it's, uh, all those in favor of adding the panel to the tree ordinance for solar panel?
It's a word. After solar.
Yeah, just playing this one up here. I believe that'll work.
Okay. Then all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Would be some consensus?
Yes.
To move forward with fixing this primitive thing.
Yes.
Got it.
All right.
It was something Peter mentioned last month. I, we need her to bring back this month to fix it. Right.
Next on new business. City Administrator Review. Do you want to read the synopsis, Chad, or do you?
Sure. Uh, per contract, city council is conducting a performance review of the city administrator. Last year's updated evaluation document, provided council beginning May, which turned into mayor a few weeks later, review. Official performance review is conducted during the legislative session earlier this evening. Decisions are not made during executive session. Our party council now resolved to accept or deny the continued employment of the city administrator and make salary adjustments to be so desired. Your options are to resolve to approve or deny future employment, take other actions decided by council or do nothing.
Has anyone?
I would resolve to approve the city administrator future employment, making salary adjustments uh, at this time in the way of, uh, the, uh, cost of living increase that the other employees would get and to table, uh, any other salary adjustment until council has more information on comparables, et cetera.
Okay. Second, any discussion? Aaron, none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. All right.
That's just, you want to report this why?
Yeah. We're gonna get that passed. We gotta do it, you gotta do it.
All right, council concerns. All I know.
I have no particular concerns written down on my agenda.
Great, Sharon?
I don't know.
Dana?
Um, I just want to reiterate that, uh, I'm going to be around the fire station on Friday after the parade to help out in any way I can, but if anybody wants to have a friendly discussion, uh, or offer constructive suggestions on how to improve our emergency responders' dangerous environment, I'll be happy to appear definitely. I'll be there for them.
Preston?
Uh, I just hope that everybody has a safe and happy Fourth of July. Yeah. City doesn't.
Well, that's a good thing.
I'm gonna stay home.
Tranchalizer. Yeah.
You're opposed. Hey, you know something? Seven twenty five F Street is grass two and a half feet high. That woman has never cut the lawn. If someone lets off a firework and a lance in there, we're gonna have a grass fire in town. And I do know neighbors that live across the street from that house that like to light off fireworks, illegal fireworks. It's just a, a, a word of caution.
I was doing math real quick. I was explaining to you that that was in your next door neighbor there.
No, it's not my next door neighbor. That's my stop.
Well, yeah, we'll go keep an eye and see what we, uh, what we do this right here.
Okay. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Go to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn. Thank you, everyone, for coming.